Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's September fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you all for joining us. Let's start the meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Okay. He just pulled in?
Okay.
Who did?
Andy, I believe. Okay, so we've got Norm, we've got Howard, we've got Dana, we've got Jerry Sherman, and myself, and I think Andy's on his way in. And Mary Beth, thank you.
Eight of us.
So, um. Seven.
Sorry about that.
Seven, so.
Andy is here, then Arnold Folk.
That's right. Hey, Andy.
Hi, Andy.
We're just getting going here. So approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Jerry? Any discussion, any additions? All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
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 Um, no public here. So no public comment tonight, down to new business. Now, you probably saw in your mailings that we got yet another letter.
Yep.
About the permits at Kenny Motors. So. This one's from same letter, same request, but a different law firm this time. Apparently, the, I, I think the business is being sold, or at least the property is being sold. I, I did have this in hand for the select board meeting the other night. And we had talked two weeks ago with, I, I had talked to the select board about the first letter. Um, and Kevin Brown actually attended that meeting. So he said everything was going to be taken care of as far as Langrock and Sperry and Wolf. Uh, but then since that meeting and since our last meeting, we, we get this new letter from Detman Law asking for the same thing. So that was discussed at the select board meeting the other night again. And they agree, we don't have the authority.
The planning commission does not have the authority.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't we write that to them? That we didn't have that authority?
We wrote that it was an unusual, unusual request. And, and we brought up the Kevin Brown.
Yep.
Possible conflict of interest factor. So we'll need to respond to this one as well. And. You know. We don't have to say much more.
I'd make a motion that, um. We authorize the chair to respond that it is not within our authority and we're passing it along to the select board.
The select board's already spoken about it, but, but a motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Has anybody answered that letter?
The second letter?
Well, the first one did not answer the question that we had in terms of authority. It only answered, it only addressed us. I didn't see the letter, so I'm speaking blindly. Uh, but I, based on what you just said, Barbara, the first letter only expressed a conflict of interest. When it did not address the authority question with respect to.
It did not address the authority question per se. I don't think.
We did not. We talked about that the conflict of interest didn't matter to us because the, the root cause was the, or the, the root issue was whether we would do it or not.
But we had the authority to do it.
Right, that, that's how I remember it. And that, that, that the conflict of interest really didn't, it's, it, it may have existed, but that wasn't the, the core issue.
Didn't you just say a select word agree that we don't have that?
That was, that was what they said the other night.
So then.
You don't have the authority.
So then your motion is totally logical and we.
But, but I'd rather not send it back to the, take it back to the select board. Um, I don't think they want to hear about this.
Well, then maybe we amend it and say that, that you send a letter directly to this law firm that we don't have that authority.
And copy the select board.
And copy the select board, sure.
Or do we count, do we consult counsel who is now doesn't have a conflict of interest about how we should respond? Because the, the last time we went at great, we discussed at great length. Um, what authority and what requirements would be in place?
Why don't we send them a letter before we spend the money?
Yeah.
See how they respond.
Norm?
I'm a bit concerned about counsel. Because Langrock and Sperry, I don't think can be involved in this issue. Since they disqualified themselves. Uh. I think they would not answer it, so.
Well, this, this second letter is, it copies the original person who sent us the letter.
Yes.
At Langrock and Sperry. So they are still kind of involved. It looks like. It, it, it could be that the lawyer we initially heard from is now hiring a paralegal at Detman Law to make the same request.
Well, I don't know.
Lawyer at Sperry, uh, Langley and Sperry.
Yeah, he's, he's copied the lawyer.
I, I wouldn't come to that conclusion.
Yeah.
I, I looked at it. Uh, the way I viewed it was that, uh, Langrock and Sperry is no longer involved in the matter. And that Detman, um. Is a new firm.
That's what I thought. That was the way I.
I don't know why he would be copied then.
Why, who'd be copied?
Bill Miller.
The Langrock attorney.
Just to let them know it's taken care of. That was done.
Why, okay, but I don't see why they, they would have to tell him that.
Unfortunately.
They weren't connected. Um. I think this can be handled with just another simple letter.
I agree.
Would, and copy to the select board. Man, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we should do. Just write a simple, just a simple letter saying essentially that we're not going to do it. And I hope that somebody could word it better than I did. And I'm just in.
Is it okay with you, Dana?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Or you could just modify it.
Well, I, I'd withdraw the motion and either, either I'll make another one or someone else can make another one. Uh, because I don't know that we need to modify a motion that. You know, if we don't want it to go back to the select board, then I I'll make a motion that we respond to the letter, copy the select board, that, uh, the request is not within our statutory authority.
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I think that's correct. What, what the, uh, select board was saying the other night is that being a, a town without zoning, we don't. How I interpreted it is that we don't have the structure to meet the request or to address it. You know, those. The board of adjustment or, you know, all the other things that go with zoning. So.
So then perhaps there should be a clarification and I'll make a friendly amendment to my own motion. To say that, uh, given our um, governance structure and the absence of zoning. We do not have.
The authority.
Authority. You can leave statutory and I take it out, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter to me. We do not have the authority to, um. Meet their request. Or address their request. Copy this and please copy this. Select board. And should they, should we copy our attorney? Just asking a question.
I. I don't see a need to.
So just copy this like.
And that's a motion.
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mary Beth, what was that?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, next, um, you were mailed, emailed the, um. Latest work by Bill. This, he took on his own volition, um, to, um. Get into the subdivision ordinance and reformat that. I don't know if you. I don't think there are copies here on the table. Um, and I don't know if we need to discuss this much tonight. Um, we, we may want a little more time to look it over. And, and then we can send this one to the town attorney if we have, um, if we want, um, him to take a look at any changes that are in it, but it's mostly, um, formatting. Bill, do you want to jump in and?
Yeah, so, um, this is just the, the latest in, in many of them that I've been working on. On the cover page, if you, if you, in the email, if we printed it out, I put in there what I changed, which were mostly formatting and, and things like that, just some minor stuff. But over the past few years, we've talked about wanting to change this part of it or that part of it. So I was told after talking with Kevin about one of the other ordinances, Kevin Brown. We couldn't change, there was no precedent for changing the format of an ordinance, just the layout without going through the whole adoption process. So if we want to change it, so I'm trying, we have about five different formats and layouts for ordinances. They, different times are put together, these different formats, so I'm trying to get them so they're all consistent and easier, so all the information's the same. Uh, so, and part of that, just started, we can just go through it and if there's spelling errors, we can fix those now. Like where it says zoning, we'll take zoning out, we can do that now. So it's just part of that process that we can go through, so.
So it doesn't have to be readopted if it's, if it's a format change, I'm sorry.
He said there was no precedent either way for or against it, so he says, so because I can't tell you there, you can do it without the adoption, he's like, I'm going to tell you, you can't do without the adoption. So we have to go through the, if we want to change the formatting, we have to go through the warning process and things like that anyway. So if we gotta do it anyway, we can go through and change the stuff we've been talking about. So this was just to let everybody see it. Get some ideas down, nothing we need to discuss tonight, just to say, here, here's my notes and, and go on from there, so.
Yeah, it's been since nineteen ninety-nine, right?
Uh.
It was last.
Yeah, nineteen eighty was the version that, well, yeah, it was, it was amended in nineteen ninety-nine, so yeah, that was.
Yeah, I think it was a small amendment, yeah.
There were several small amendments and then notated in the, um, in the document.
Norm?
Um. So we can change, make non-substantive changes.
No. We, I asked him if I could change the layout, just the, the physical appearance of it without going through the readoption process, and he said, no. So if we have to go through the readoption process to even change the, just the look of it. Then we might as well just change all the things that are wrong with it that we wanted to fix anyway, so.
Yeah, but they're mo, they're not substantive changes, as I recall, they were wording.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you want to make substantive changes, it's all the same process, it doesn't, it's not going to affect it either way, so.
It's worked pretty well for us, but it is old.
The only thing I, the one thing I thought of was like, the boundary line adjustments is that was something that we've done several of. That the only thing that says in here is that what it, it was, it is what it isn't. And really doesn't talk about it, so if we wanted to add language about that.
Well, um, we did, didn't we? Um, in the definitions.
It's in the definition, that's the place it is, yeah, so it was a little, little strange, but, yeah, so, but that's, that's what it's there for. If, just to go through it, find any spelling errors, grammar errors that, that are there and, and anything else we want to change, and then we can, we can go through that, so.
Yeah, so, um.
One of the things I noticed that there's several references to zoning regulations, uh, in there that are just incorrect. I don't, I mean, tackling that is a big job.
What I noticed was that there was a reference to zoning regulations if they exist, and I don't know if that was put in there intentionally. Uh, with the thought that perhaps down the road, those zoning, uh, regulations would be adopted. I, I think that we should reexamine, after talking with Bill and having had a couple of conversations with this body. I think we should reexamine whether we should have, um, we should have that implemented. That would, I think, my humble opinion, uh, reduce a lot of headaches that we currently, um, experience as a result of, um, you know, decisions. But, uh, it would provide a categorical way to, um, answer a lot of quasi-legal questions, but.
What is your, your suggestion? We have a zoning order?
Yeah, I think so.
Mm-hmm. But that's, that's a separate issue from this.
Yes, I know, but if we're going to look at what these state, and it currently states zoning, if it exists, that I would be averse to removing that language if I think or others think that we should go ahead and adopt that. In talking with Bill, there was some historical precedent about how close we were to adopting zoning, and then we missed a timeline for doing.
We missed that window.
Right, but it was all, it was all presented and approved by the voters from what Bill told me last week, don't we?
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, I think I remember that in the first few years that I was, uh, I was here in the town.
I have the, the draft zoning document. I have, I have a copy of it, but I've, I've never, I haven't gone through it, but I do have a copy of it.
Well, my thinking is that we should take the reference to zoning out. Because if we did approve zoning at some point, we would change that whole thing. I mean, everything would be different in the ordinance. For getting approval and who would approve it and, you know, what the conditions would be. Yeah, Norm.
Yeah, I, I share your view. I think there should be no reference in it to zoning. I remember raising this issue years ago. And my sense was that perhaps this was a, um. This was taken in substantial part, or model ordinance that had zoning in it and it was just missed. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but it's just my sense, given the, um. Given the town's reluctance over the years, uh, to adopt a zoning ordinance, I would take it out. I mean, there's, I, I looked at, the one thing that jumped out at me when I was just glancing at the first few pages is they use select men, and now I think it ought to be select board. Um, that, you know, but those are really nits, uh, that just make it updated.
But it's not the name of the group anymore, select man.
Right, yeah, well, and for good reason. Yeah.
Wasn't it always a select board?
I don't know.
Or is it, it, the old, the older ones say Board of Selectmen.
A Board of Selectmen, so that there's been a name change.
Yeah, at some point. So the other, and the other ones, I'm going through and doing the same thing, I'm just, I'm changing that throughout the whole thing, so, yeah. That, but, like, this was just to get it out there so people can start looking at it and making those notes and we can have a more in-depth conversation later, but, uh, yeah, this is kind of like the first stop. So if I may, if Norman got it, Kim got a copy, Dana got a copy, if anybody else wants one, I can make that for them, so.
Okay. Should we just spend a little more time looking at this and pick it up the next meeting?
I just want to thank Bill for all of his, uh, good work. Um, I, I like the, um, line numbers as just a point of reference. It makes it really easy to be able to identify what it is we're talking about and what line it is, so just thanks for just doing that, Bill.
Well, I will, I will say I was looking for an ordinance on, language from another town on other topics. And I happened to come across, I said, ooh, look at that, nice format, so I completely stole this format from somebody else, so.
That's okay.
That's how it works, that's how.
Um.
Good choice.
So it's, it's, it's the, it's the town of, it's the city of Berry, uh, flood has a regulation, actually, it's there.
I, I saw that, it's on page one.
I missed some of the headers too, yeah. And some of the headers got left in there, so.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll all come out, don't worry.
There you go.
That's, 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 that's why it's there.
But it makes it very easy to, to point someone to where you.
That's, that's why, that's why I like those, I was, oh, that's a good idea.
So one thing that I will, um, point out in terms of inconsistency, when you do convert over to the formatting, we've changed from articles.
Yeah.
To sections.
Yeah.
And there are still references in there to the old article numbers, and that isn't easily translatable.
Yeah, so I, and that's the thing too, it's just, it's just repointing some of those, so I, I did miss some of those, so.
But I, now, if, if you'd like, I'll just go back and pull the lines where they appear and you can.
And, and that, that's what I think, just everybody come together and then.
Yep.
We can say, okay, who's got changes for this page, and we can all put them together and then.
Yeah.
Go over again, yeah.
Sounds great.
I'm just wondering, given the size of this, um. Whether it would be useful or not, if we just, those of us who can't, um. Circle the little changes we want, at least the non-substantive ones. And, you know, just the proof we really want, consistency, whatever. And send it to Bill in advance, because there's not going to be any dispute over, I don't think, select board or select men or, uh. Article or section or, you know, that kind of stuff. And get it to him in advance of the next meeting, or even the one afterwards. I mean, we're not, this isn't a, but.
Right.
A, uh.
Time sensitive?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a, not a lot of urgency, although it's certainly important. And it will shorten up our meetings considerably. If there's substance and stuff, we can bring it up, but otherwise the, you know, sort of picking the nits, pardon the expression, we'll bring it over to him.
Yeah.
And, um.
That's, that's a good idea, yeah.
If you don't mind.
Fine.
Yeah.
And I was, I'm thinking maybe we should, when we're done with our stuff, um, we do send it to the town attorney, just to see if there's any new legis, you know, statute that might allow us to do something else, or, you know, maybe we need to take something out, out now or reword it.
It, it doesn't seem like he takes a lot, it doesn't take him a lot, a long time to go over some of this, it's going to take a little more time, but, but, yeah, I think that's fine. This, this is an important one, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've, we've got the budget for that and I think it should, probably should be standard operating procedure for all of our ordinances, and we have been sending them along to him for comments. Okay, so we'll take, we'll take a look at this between now and the next meeting. And get any comments to Bill.
Yep.
Now. We'll skip down to old business. And the town attorney is still looking, he's still discussing with the select board the informational building ordinance. So we sent to the select board the, the new ordinance, the new, uh, permit form and the questionnaire. Um, and they, they started looking at, at, at their last meeting Tuesday night, and the town attorney was there. He had some comments that I, that I missed, I had left the meeting at this point, about the questionnaire, and Bill, could you fill us in?
Yeah, uh, Kevin touched on it briefly. Um, he, he had talked about some changes that we should make to the existing permit form, so on your desks are a copy of that form with the changes. It's, they're pretty minor. One section where I, we asked the applicant to list regulatory permits and approvals with project property subject to, that's in the ordinance already. So it's just putting it on paper to define those, and then on the sketch plan, the, the pa, the page where they sketch their project, uh, the requirements of what is supposed to be on that sketch. So I just add that box up, so they're, they're pretty minor changes, but it's things that are already written in the ordinance. Um, so. The board ultimately tabled their discussion the other night because it was, they had, they had other topics they needed to get to, but, um, Kevin. It seemed like he said the questionnaire was too close to zoning, but they didn't really get into the discussion of that. They tabled the whole thing, so the, I'll bring it up next meeting, but that was his initial opinion at least, but from what I understand, he'd only looked at it that day, so that, what, at least what, what he had said, so, um. They didn't, no, nothing's been decided on it yet, so that, that's been, it's been tabled till, till their next meeting.
So Bill, on the form that you gave us, what are the changes specifically?
Um, the section above where's the signature of applicant?
Yep, the li, list the, um, existing regulatory permit?
That's, I added that.
That's added, okay.
That's added, and then on the sketch plan page, it's like, the second page.
Yep, the description.
That box of what needs to be included.
Oh, you added the whole box?
The whole box, and that's right, that's directly from the ordinance itself, so.
Okay.
There, there, it's not really significant changes to the permit form, it's just, it's just bringing it in line with the.
Right.
With that, so that will be posted tomorrow.
Norm?
Uh, you know, something struck me as I was reading this. It says, it goes all the way down, list the existing regulatory permits and or approvals to which the property is subject, subject to. New permits and or prior permitting at the site. This is adopted, and we get another letter.
No, no.
Which comes directly out of the ordinance.
Out of the ordinance.
As it exists.
That's for building permits.
And these are the permits.
Permit tracking ordinance.
These are permits it's subject to. Where, it's not saying these permits are in order, are up to date, have expired.
Says new permits.
But I, I. It's, it's directly out of the ordinance as it is now, so I didn't change any wording.
The, the font on the second line is different from the font on the first line, but.
Was it?
Yeah, and you can remove the second, that two at the end of the line because you already have it preceding the which, so.
Well, I.
Okay.
You've got two, you've got two prepositions and you don't need them in that context.
What's, what struck me was that it, it rubbed pretty close to the inquiry we received. And I, I just wondered if it opens us to that kind of inquiry. Or if this exists, as Bill says.
I, I don't think, what the letter asked for is a confirmation that the, the properties in reference are in compliance with applicable municipal regulations. And I think this is a list merely of applicable municipal regulations. And it does not say one way or the other, whether they are in compliance or out of compliance.
Right, it's not asking about compliance, it's saying if they're subject to it or not. But. Yeah, it's got to, but Kevin, Kevin did call that out specifically that it wasn't there, so, good point, so it, it needs to be there. Unless we, unless we change the ordinance to say that we take it out, but right now, that's, that's, that's there.
Yeah, I don't think we have it anywhere else. It must be something relatively new. Norm, does that address your concerns? Or does the, the legal mind of, that you have?
Right. It just, it seemed to me that it is a basis for somebody to argue that. I mean, one of the things we could say is we don't keep, we don't have a record of all these things. You know, we don't have it easily at hand. Um, and, you know. For instance, this property, I don't know, it's twenty-five years old, I mean, are we supposed to go through the, um, property that Langrock and Detman are dealing with? And are we supposed to go through all our permits to find out whether they have them or not have them, that kind of thing, and this just kind of coagulates that information. Now, the other thing is, this is basically for homes, is that correct?
What?
For commercial as well?
It, it doesn't specify, it's, it's, it's for properties in town, it doesn't.
Oh, okay. That, that, that's what threw my attention, it, it would give us a better record than we now have. If, if the attorney's comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it, just.
Yeah, I mean, Bill. From what, what the, the attorney was saying, what would go in there? What, what, what would be listed?
He didn't say what would go in there, he said it was missing from the permit.
Because the.
The ordinance says.
The ordinance, the subdivision.
Language should, it, it, the ordinance says the permit form shouldn't, shall include this language, so that's why. So that's why it's there, so I, I missed that when I was making this form, so. And the language on the second page was supposed to be there too, but. So some people include it, some people haven't. But we've never asked for, what permits are you also subject to? Some people will say none, and they may be, but we're. Nowhere does it say, we go back and verify that information. Because if they say, I'm subject to no other permits. It's, it would be a monumental task to try and go through every permit that can be subject to. To see if they're. Telling the truth or not.
But this is the building.
Right.
Permit, as opposed to the subdivision permit, which is the quest, which is the question that. Uh, Kenny Motors, I think, is asking.
Kenny Motors is asking, are those two properties in compliance with all town ordinances?
And if I read or interpreted the, the. Uh, document that you reformatted.
Yeah.
Correctly. Uh, that is a requirement. Or, uh, prior to any sale or transfer of the property.
Yeah.
So. With Barbara's comment earlier, it seems to be that they're preparing for some type of. Action that would fall under our subdivision regulations, which is why they want to. Um, get some type of assurance that they're in compliance without identifying.
Very possible, I, I haven't heard. I haven't heard anything about it, but that's, seems like a logical conclusion to their request.
And the select board did, did also mention that this is. These requests. Don't, are unusual. And are usually, you know, they're usually paid for.
Yeah.
By the, you know, by Kenny or whoever.
Whoever is requesting it.
Yeah.
There's, there was a great. Cut line I heard. A, a, a description wasn't from the board, but it's, it's a little, it's overly burdensome, overly broad and vague, like.
The request.
Do this, like, we can't.
Yeah.
So go back, you, we have to look at, like, they have driveways. Did you get a driveway permit? If so, when? When was the ordinance in effect? Like, what, we, there's all sorts of things we gotta look at for this, that. But, there, there are ordinances that we have. That we have not, the, and a part of this process with redoing ordinances is. There's been some things we're finding that are, that haven't been kept up with. So. We're not holding anybody accountable, because we haven't also been doing the process, but I will tell you right now, if we hold the letter of the ordinances, they are absolutely in violation. Of at least one. But we haven't held anybody accountable to it, so it's not like we're.
Oh, plus, plus, well, you know, for Kenny Motors, where we're getting this request, they're in the Moonbrook watershed.
Yeah.
So we, you know, is, are there oil spills going in?
Oh, gosh.
You know, in.
I don't.
On the property, or any of the other things that we now are regulating.
The, the office staff does not, and this is pretty much true of every town clerk, the office staff regularly is asked. By people. Can you do this research for me? No, we don't, because if we miss something. Then we assume the liability, same thing with this, I, I don't think we do the research, because then we assume the liability if. If we say they are and they're actually not, or we say they're not and they actually are, like.
Yeah.
It's just a, it's a big ask.
Yeah, Norm.
You know, it seems to me that letter is a CYA letter. Because they know what the tour is, and they're trying to avoid it, they're gonna have to send. And, and it may be part of the purchase and sale agreement, that the seller represents using compliance with all municipal and state permits. And.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking now. Uh, that, the motion that I made that we passed, I would like to make a motion to rescind. Because I don't think it's a question of authority. I think it's a question of burden of responsibility.
Liability, yeah.
Well, yes, that comes as a result of the burden of responsibility. So, I, I, I don't know how we do that, but I know we've passed a motion. Um, I guess I would like to rescind, I don't know whether it rules well enough, but I think I would like to rescind the motion. That we passed earlier in favor of a different motion, which I have not myself. Formulated, but I, I think that the response needs to be, because that's, they're going to come back and if, say, if, if you don't have the authority, who does?
Yeah.
And they're gonna, then, then they're gonna send it to the select board or somebody.
Other times where there've been requests and the board just basically says, we're declining to take action on the request. And leaves it at that.
But that was what they said the other night.
It was.
Uh, sorry.
You don't. Doesn't have the authority.
That's what the, that's what the select board said.
Yep.
Okay.
And if they come back and say, then who does? We're gonna say, we don't have a research. Arm of our, of our office that's gonna be able to do that for you, so. I, I think saying that. This body doesn't have the authority or the access, really, I mean. You, you don't, you don't approve the permits, like, so you really don't have the resources necessary to complete a request.
Norm.
Um, I think if Dana wants to withdraw his motion, whoever seconded the motion. Should join in it. Um, my recollection on Robert Shules' order. Is that the only time a motion can be rescinded. Is before or at. The next meeting, and it must be made by the person. Who made the motion in the first place.
And, yeah, not sure he's going there.
We don't have to.
We, we, we use it as guidance.
Well, because we adopted the. Code of Conduct and the public participation, like, that was specifically things we did. Because we don't have Robert Shules' orders, we have, like, the guidelines we, we talked about because of that, so I think it talks, it talks about motions in there.
Yes.
That's true. Oh.
I was thinking out loud, I did not make a motion. So the select board told us we don't have the authority, then we're giving them.
Your motion would have, from before would apply.
Would apply, yep.
Okay, let's go with that. Now, back to this. This, um, list. That Kevin Brown wanted you to include.
Yeah.
On the permit, you said it was in the permit tracking ordinance? I can't find that.
I'll be the old one, um. It's, uh, permit administration and application section.
Which section is that?
Okay, there, there it is, um, it's section. Six, number two. Oh. I think it's six.
The application form should contain.
Six-two and six-three, yeah.
So contain questions pertaining to the name, address, contact, blah, blah, blah. And or permitting at the site, and other questions relative to the project, and then the application. Or sketch a worksheet or paper.
What was the reference again, Bill?
So it's the. Permit Administration and Application Section. Paragraphs two and three.
Okay, so it is there. He was right. And the select board tabled this, do they have the, these latest?
No.
This latest version?
No, because thi- this came out of that conversation.
Right.
I'm, I'm getting our form in compliance with the ordinance as it exists, and if they want to make changes to it, then they're free to do that, but. But, yeah, we're, I'm trying to get caught up and. Finding a few different things like this here and there.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll await their decision on. On that.
They did, uh, adopt a, a different one, so that's, we've got one that we started the process on now, so.
Yep.
That will at least get me approval for the format, so.
Which one is that, Bill?
The peddler, solicitor, and transient merchant.
Did they change?
Yeah, we, 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 it, it never specified a fee amount or a timeline or a permit. I used the, I used the permit form that I found and went by that, but we've, we put in there. We established a, a fee and a timeline. And gave the board the ability to modify it as, by specific requests, so. But, but, again, and that one, I changed things like, you know, border selectment, the select board, and it's just, you know, but it's all, it's gonna look, it's gonna look like the, like this. Now on, so.
It doesn't have anything to do with aggressive panhandling.
No, that one's gone.
Yeah, that one's gone. Okay, anything else on the informational building permit for now? We'll, we'll await the slick boards' direction on that. Um, there was not a discussion Tuesday night about the river corridor and flood hazard regulations. Um, the state person, the D E C person who was gonna come in and talk to the select board, uh, was exposed to COVID that very day. So, um, he canceled, and. We're gonna do that one on. The eleventh.
Think so.
I told them.
Did he, did he respond back?
Why is the? Um. Yeah, yeah, he did, he confirmed that.
Why what?
The town hall being closed the day before?
It's.
Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Veterans' Day?
Oh.
Oh, it is, yeah, it is, I think it is.
Okay, okay.
Huh?
Veterans' Day.
That's in November.
No, Columbus Day, isn't it, or what used to be called Columbus Day?
No, October.
That's a new name.
It was formerly Columbus Day, it's now Indigenous Peoples' Day.
So if anyone wants to join in on, on the eleventh, to hear.
We're not closed that day.
It's okay. There are a lot of things going on.
Okay, um, the Pocket Park. I did go with the cup, those two grant suggestions to the select board. Nothing was done. Um.
What do you mean, they didn't take any action on those?
They didn't take any action. Didn't ask us to do anything for them, I'll keep, I'll. Keep the topic alive. With them. And trying to get some, some movement, and I, I don't know what's going on with, um, with. Talks with G M P on, you know, access or. Ownership of the parcel either.
Given the fact that they didn't take any action, then people know that. It's likely that. Uh, one of those. Uh, grant deadlines will expire before we could do anything.
Right.
Because I think that was October first.
The, the, if we went for another municipal planning grant like we did. Um, this last time, that one will expire, but the other one's a rotating one.
Yep.
And that's the one that would do design and construction.
Construction, right, that's the one, that was a lot, that was a larger amount for a larger amount.
Most likely.
Yep.
Get more. Okay. The energy survey is out as of the townwide celebration. Um. And. It's on the town website, right on the banner, at the bottom of the banner, a blue banner across, it's on the town webpage. We've got some respondents so far, so, uh, talk it up, I, I asked the select board if we could. Um, extend the period that it is open, we're taking respondents into November, and they're no problem with that. They had no problem with that, I asked because the circle's probably not gonna come out until late. October, the next one.
Yeah, October first is the deadline for articles, so.
For articles, yeah, so it's usually three weeks, at least three weeks after that. Before it ends up in mailboxes. So, yeah, and there's some cards out there with a QR code. If you just wanna. Just use your phone, you can, you do that to do the survey. Or go online, and I guess I'll get some hard copies. Town clerk's office. Although, those will, have to be manually entered into the online system. So. Announcements news. We've got. A letter here from the select board. Dear Barbara and Planning Commission members, thank you so very much for playing an important part in Rutland Town's celebration. Last Saturday, August twenty-seventh. We appreciated your display table with information about the Pocket Park and the town's energy survey. Hope you got, you get lots of survey responses. Special thanks to Barbara, Mary Beth Polley, and Annie McCain for answering questions about the Planning Commission's work. Your generosity and community spirit are much appreciated. Thanks for helping make our town's celebration a success and for all that you do for our town. And signed by. All five.
Great. We appreciate the recognition.
In other, uh, news, my takeaway from the slick board meeting the other night was another discussion about the Cortina Inn.
About what?
The Cortina Inn. And all of the, uh, all of the police issues down there, and. All of the effects on the businesses. In the, the plaza there. And the general manager of the Hampton Inn came in that night, Tuesday night. And talked about. Everything that. He and his customers are seeing. He mentioned that, um, for, especially his corporate clients, he doesn't even put them on that side of his hotel. Because of what, what. Earlier ones have seen and remarked on, and said things like they can't believe the activity, what's going on behind there. Uh, you know, one of the most heartbreaking things he said was that. He hates to see the Rutland Town school bus. Come by and pick up kids from the Cortina Inn or drop them off at the end of the day, because they're being exposed to that. When they're not in school. So it's, it's continues to be a bad situation, if not even a worse situation than it has been. It's in litigation. Right now. Uh, between the town and the state, and I'm not sure if there are other parties, well. And I, you know, there's. Not much we can do about it, but I just thought I would just. Pass that along. That, you know, the town is, is trying to do something. Um. But it's not soon enough for, for some of the. Businesses in that area. So, and, and there was talk about, you know, there was a, a flimsy fence that was put up. Between the hotels, I believe. That just got torn down. Um, and, you know, and, and the police department. Police, our police department's making an, or a number of calls down there, and. They'll go into, uh, Dick's Sporting Goods to respond to. You know, a call, and they'll leave, and then five minutes after they leave, there's another call.
They come back.
Yeah, it's just, it's a horrible situation. And.
Just the blue tarp alone on the sign, just. I hate to say it, but it just annoys me every time I drive by it, it's the only way I could put it.
And there, there's some people who are convinced that they're out of state people that are, that are being housed there. That, they're not all Vermonters, um, that's what some people. Believe, and I, I, I don't have the facts for that. But. So.
Doesn't really matter, does it?
Doesn't seem like it, yeah.
Whether they're out of state or they're in state is still a bad situation.
Still a bad situation, right? So, but, but why is, why is Vermont paying for?
Oh, I see.
Out of, you know, paying for the housing for out of stayers. Or, you know, what, what is that arrangement, you know?
They all seem to have found a. Very easy, nice place to come to, it's Vermont. They're coming from everywhere, it's. Gotta start from the top down here. Even put a stop on this, it's probably happening in other communities too. I'm sure it is, in, in other. Parts of the state.
Yeah, there were, there were s- two or three others that were selected to. Put these people up. That were initially, uh, affected by the pandemic.
So, so i- is the funding for that, that program coming to an end? Because there's been so much in the.
Because there's been so much in the papers about. Uh, housing funding that that's ending soon. I don't know if it includes that.
This is, this is different.
Certainly the support for people who are renting.
Yeah, yeah, the ones for, the program for individuals is coming to an end, yeah, this fall.
So would that include? The people?
I don't, I think this is a separate state.
Okay.
Sanctioned. Um, because I don't think these people are getting like. You know, payments that they turn around and and give the Cortina Inn. I think the Cortina Inn is is has, has been under contract with the state.
This hasn't attracted the attention of the media.
I know. I know. And, you know, is it, you know, is it because, oh, it's Rutland again, it's, you know? I don't know. It hasn't attracted the local media and.
Well, it seems has, I, I mean, I haven't seen anything.
There's been a story or two, but the.
Significant, I guess. I mean, the couple of articles that I've read, that I remember reading, are all about. Meetings that are supposed to happen, but I haven't heard the follow-up from those meetings. I mean, it just doesn't seem very.
Listen to Cortina, you know, the old Holiday Inn. It's one of many. All those hotels are voucher people. They're all on vouchers from the state, only the Comfort Inn. And Hampton Inn are the two hotels left in Rutland. That are full of voucher people. So that that may be the worst scenario down there. But North Main Street, the three up on Woodstock Avenue. It's all the same. Every bit of it. And I I I cringe every time I see somebody pulling in there that thinks they're going into a motel somewhere. If they pull in the Holiday Inn, I feel for them. I'm like, I wanna drive up to them and say, turn around and go somewhere else, scared. Think that somebody gets something done.
Yeah, and I think part of that is because it is in litigation now. You know, so there's nothing to be said publicly. But it's still. It's still a story. A compelling story. Whether it's just, whether it's what's going on in the Cortina Inn, or, you know, what's happening to all of the establishments and all but two in Rutland. So, yeah. Kind of a downer. Any other news? Maybe lift our spirits up a little bit?
Yeah, the board on 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 the desks here and and I can. Send one to Mary Beth, but the the board adopted a new town personnel policy. Uh, and after some discussion, they decided that anybody that gets a paycheck from the town. Or is on that list is is subject to it, so I left copies there for everybody to review and. You can bring that, bring that back. Later at some point, but they asked for everybody that gets a paycheck from the town to. Review that and sign acknowledging it.
Right, I thought this was an annual thing, because we did it last year too.
Did, and but it's been revised, that's why there's.
So if it hadn't been revised, we we, if we had signed one last year, we wouldn't have had to do it. I thought it was an annual.
Your response to the last one was less than stellar, so I'm hoping, hopefully get a little better response to this one. Um, but it it wa- it wasn't a lot of changes, but there were some changes, but there's. Some of the things certainly don't apply to everybody here, but there's certain things that do, so.
Right.
Uh, so they've, they they, after they they discussed it for a little while and decided that. The the only way to really to do it equally is if you get a paycheck from the town, then it's.
You're subject to the personnel policy.
Yeah.
Was it sixteen pages long with last time?
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah, there's, there's been a few things added to it mainly, or it's mainly around. Benefits and things like that, the there was some changes made to that, uh, bring us in line. So, nothing, you know, I don't, people want to sign it tonight, that's fine, but but we're gonna do it for the next meeting, that's fine too, it's just.
Everybody has copy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mary Beth, you'll send one to her, right?
Yeah.
So it's a sixteen pager, Mary Beth, and then there's a separate page to sign.
And you're all, yeah, I got, I. Well, I got the list, I got everybody's name on a list, Norm, don't worry. I always made the official, the official acknowledgement for this, so.
Bill, your last page is numbered fourteen of sixteen?
Yes, the six, the sixteenth page is for elected officials. So th- there's an acknowledgement page for people that are elected, specifically for people that are elected.
Okay, so that's addendum B?
Yes.
Got it, thanks. I'd obsess about something like that.
I I gotta, I gotta give Howard, Howard gets the special elected page, cause he's. He's, he's elected, so.
So it's either fourteen, it's either fifteen or sixteen. That you saw.
If you're elected, you sign both.
Oh, okay.
Because if you're elected, you're not subject to like dismissal or employee review, things like that. Where other people are, so.
Yeah, okay.
So do you have the right copy, Howard, or?
My ends up paid.
Yeah, I just. For the extra cop, I didn't predict page for him, I I missed that one, but I I got them.
Okay, understood, everyone?
Yep.
Take a look at it, sign it. Any other news? Any good news from Act two fifty yet, Mary Beth?
Um, I have everything we need for the response, just have to. Uh, do the E certificate of service. And uh, submit, figure out how to submit, you know, you have to go through A and R online. Revised there and then email to all the parties. Uh, I saw Ed Bove was on there as one of them, so I'm gonna. Changing it to, that was for Act two fifty, so changing it to Devon. Um, yeah, so clerical things, but I have. The map from Andy that's updated and. So hoping to submit everything tomorrow. So then the application will be. Um, administratively complete, hopefully. And then they can really uh begin the review, but hopefully there won't be too much after that. For the mountain bike trails.
Okay, and and yeah, you're you're talking, the Act two fifty right now is for the shared use.
Yes. Yep. Right, for the um, for the mountain bike trail loop.
Okay.
Yeah, shared use is already all permitted. It just, um. Uh, isn't being constructed yet.
Yeah, what is the timeline on that, Bill?
Uh. Delayed. The plan for construction was for the highway department to do a bulk of the work. And then our road commissioner retired. So we put the project out to bid and it came in. Substantially higher than we were prepared to pay for, so we were just rejecting bids because we didn't have a budget for it. Uh, so now the road crew's looking at being able to to take the project up again, so it's just, it's delayed because we didn't. Wanna pay nearly three hundred thousand dollars to have it done for us.
Yeah. Do they think they can fit it in this, a- any of it this construction season?
There's a lot going on right now, so I don't know. There there's things, there's some grants, grant work they need to get done for some coal versus things like that, so that's all. On priority right now, so.
Okay. Thanks, Mary Beth.
Sure.
Uh, let's move down to the minutes, August twenty fifth.
Most to approve the minutes from August twenty fifth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andy. Discussion. I'll go.
Did you get?
I I I got it, I didn't do anything with it, I I.
Okay.
I haven't, I.
No worries.
There it is, well, I I I've I've got more work than I can take care of at the moment, so.
Now I'm wondering, Bill. On page one. Number three B. Um, discuss changing the amount of the violation fees. No changes were made at this time, but we did make some changes.
That was the, did we wanna raise the limit to the eight hundred dollars? Kevin brought that up too, but we didn't actually, you didn't actually put any changes into effect.
Right. But we did take, strike a paragraph. On um. In section five. Regarding the vertical expansion.
Okay.
And the footprint.
Yeah, I do, I do have that in the draft, yeah.
Yeah, y- y- you changed the draft, um, just, yeah, I'm just wondering if we need it in the minutes, and then in section seven, we added. We added some wording about those.
Uh, the injunctive relief?
Yes.
Kevin said, take that out, so it's, it's gone. You you so, so. The, there was the the first part under enforcement, so the ordinance shall be, the ordinance shall be enforced as provided by twenty four V S A. Added was, and as such, the town may seek conductive relief in appropriate cases. He said there's more than one avenue for relief. And unless you're gonna specify all of them, don't specify any of them, just leave it as the, as the title, because. If you say one and not others. One could be argued that the town only wanted this as relief and not the other ones as relief, so he said, just take it out. He says, it's more complicated to put it in than it is to leave it out, so. It's coming out.
We also made those violations per day.
Yep, that's, and so the 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 other, he did say the changes to the language that were there. Were fine, he was fine with all the language, he said, except for that one line. So the per day violations, all that, any, any other changes he was fine, fine with, it was the. That that includes lo- this deleting that section on vertical expansion. And, but he said to remove that. Line about injunctive relief, he said, it wasn't, it was, makes it actually harder, not easier, so.
So the question, Barbara, is, um, so under A, I mean, I was doing it remotely, and I know I missed a whole lot, so I can't be very. Uh, I couldn't be relied upon to have a good sense of what happened or didn't happen, because when, at one point in time I asked. And uh, I thought that we were changing the fee schedule when we weren't, so, but uh, under A, several changes to the language were discussed. And adopted, would that address those changes that occurred? Rather than the B, which is actually dealing with the fee structure, which did not change?
That's true.
Or at least the amount did not change? I mean, there was a specification, but that could be covered by just adding, were discussed and um acted upon or.
So would that be covered by the motion?
Which motion?
Part C.
Move to include the revisions as discussed and presented. Uh, yeah, I think so.
Yes.
And to include the supplemental question, so I think all you need to do is, but you don't know. Okay, I I see what you're saying, Bill, that the action was actually covered under C.
Sure, sure.
Since I was the one in kind of blind or deaf or both. I I I could be okay with that.
Yeah. I still think it needs just go, that's a good point about putting in A. That they were discussed and re- revisions suggested.
Discussed and revision suggested, I'm. Sure.
Because C, you're referring to the revisions. But there was.
No reference to it.
Yeah, reference, yeah, to it. But I guess that could be covered by changes.
I have a question about B.
Yeah.
Says discussed changing the amount of the violation fees. And then we made it per day, as I recall.
We didn't change the amount, but we did make it per day, yes.
Oh.
But that would be included in A.
No changes were made at this time. That's ambiguous to me. We did make some changes.
Not to the fees.
Right.
Okay, so that's.
And that's, that's what that's.
There was, there was a lengthy discussion about changing fees. So that's why. But you didn't, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't recommend any changes to them.
Right. Because I asked that question, because I couldn't hear and see what was going on.
Kevin brought that up, that we, that the option to increase them was there, so.
Yeah.
This. This ordinance, as it sits right now, is with the select board for discussion at the next meeting, probably, so. They know about, they they're, they can talk about the fee schedule, but they just, there was. Other things, they they just were moving this, they just needed to move the meeting along, so they didn't get into it, but I think they will plan to next time.
So what's the pleasure of the group? Add to A and revision suggested, or leave it out, and it will be un- understood by Andy's. Motion.
This is okay.
It's okay. There was one typo on page two, which I signaled to Bill before. The meeting. Uh, under old business line one. Or paragraph one. Uh, the energy survey is ready to present or ready to be presented, he can. Choose however much to. Present that. Not intended. But I think the typo was that a B was in there and. Could be just omitted.
Any others? Norm, did you catch anything? It's not.
Okay, I'll I'll revise my motion to. To approve the minutes as amended.
We're just, we're just down to the typo, right?
That, I guess that's all it is, right, because you didn't need to make a change. But Phil already had that, so.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't.
Abstaining too.
Okay.
I guess I voted on it, cause I was there, or not.
You were there.
To approve as amended.
Okay. Okay, any other business? For this body?
When's the next meeting?
The.
Sixth of October.
Sixth, right. And Dana will be chairing that meeting.
I don't know if I'm gonna be here, though.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Unless people wanna hang out. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.